Good evening. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, being held in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall. As per Mass General Law, if anybody wishes to record this meeting, please let me know. I'm assuming nobody here is going to record the meeting. So, I would like to invite everybody to join me and sing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a very light agenda this evening. We're not that to diminish anything that Ms. Rooney is going to be saying, but it's one item on the agenda. All we have to do is pass the minutes and so we'll have a relatively easy thing. And we also have to sign the covenant release for Dorset Drive. So Craig wasn't there, but that's what's the five of us that need to sign off before we leave the building tonight. And we're just waiting to get a PDF set up on the master board so that we can all share the deck at the same time. And then it'll only take a couple of seconds. And here's Shayla with the thumb drive. There we go. So, I'd like to introduce this evening Sharon Rooney of Taiyi &amp; Bond, who's been, they've been commissioned by the town, or is it by the Board of Select, the Select Board, excuse me?
By the town.
By the town.
Through the Board of Select.
For the local comprehensive plan update, which is woefully overdue. And so, this is going to look like a home run compared to anything we've seen in years past. So, thank you for coming here, Ms. Rooney. It's great to have you.
Oh, great. Great. Okay. So, I will, I'm gonna, might be easier for me to, is this microphone on?
That microphone's on as well.
Yeah. Okay. I will, I maybe do a little, have to-
Might be easier on your neck, right?
Talk and turn.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's really nice to be here again. My name is Sharon Rooney. I'm Principal Planner with Taiyi &amp; Bond. We have many offices, but I'm locally based out of our office in Pocasset. Although, I live in the town of Barnstable, so I'm really close by and available on short notice. So, I, that happens on occasion here on the Cape. I've been working on the Cape for over 30 years on planning, both at the Cape Cod Commission and now Taiyi &amp; Bond. So, I'm really pleased to be here and to give you a brief overview of the local comprehensive plan update and answer any questions that you have about the Planning Board's role, the process. We have, you know, the time, so happy to answer, answer questions. The next slide, please. So, the comprehensive plan is normally updated every five to 10 years, or 10 years, really, in a 10-year cycle. And there are several goals, like number one is that the region, the regional policy plan was adopted. It's adopted and updated every five years. And so, the town in hiring us to help you is to update the plan consistent with the regional policy plan. So, it has several elements and some of them have changed since the town last went through the comprehensive planning process. Not surprisingly is to develop a vision statement and growth policy. This isn't new to the town, but it is something that actually we're beginning to work on now with the Comprehensive Planning Committee. I should say, I've been meeting with the committee since August or July of this, this year. And we've had some initial sort of outreach efforts that the committee has been undertaking towards development of the vision statement and growth policy. And we can talk more in detail about what that work is and what's yet to come on it. Also, the comprehensive plan includes updating the inventory of existing conditions and analysis of what is happening or what is the state of Harwich today in terms of various resources and issues. And that's a part of our work, as well as identifying planning and land use goals for the next 10 years, five to 10 years. So, a new element of the plan under the regional policy plan is to prepare a capital facilities element. So, this, this is new as of 2019, but it's an integral part of relating the comprehensive plan to your infrastructure and capital facilities needs. Yes, sir?
Do you want to take any questions or should we just wait until the end?
Of course. No. Right ahead, no, go ahead.
Capital, what are you, what is the definition of capital facilities?
So, capital facilities are things such as physical buildings and infrastructure that contribute to the town's wellbeing. So, it could be things ranging from schools, transportation, wastewater, the gamma-
Publicly owned property?
Yes. Yes. Publicly owned facilities and infrastructure, yes. Also, not new necessarily, but again, an emphasis in consistency this time around is to a housing production plan update. And our scope of work includes, and I think you're probably aware, is already underway is a housing production plan update by Karen Sonnerberg Associates. So, she is working on that specific element as a subcontractor to Taiyi &amp; Bond. She's already, her work is underway and she has already prepared a draft needs assessment. So, she's already up and, up and running. Key to the plan and its adoption and how do you implement the plan is a targeted action and implementation plan. So, that will be definitely a very important step in the process. And obviously, a draft and a final comprehensive plan for town meeting approval and adoption. And then to finally satisfy the requirements for the Cape Cod Commission's certification as consistent with the regional plan. So, that's part of my job here is to ensure that throughout the process that what you're doing or what the town is doing towards completing the comprehensive plan is consistent with the regional plan requirements and the comprehensive plan regulations. Yes?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be inducent, but this is all, you know, great and it looks like a lot to bite off here. And so, when I see, for instance, draft and final, I'm assuming that there are probably intermediary stages there. And what is, is there an ETA for the delivery and the deliverable?
Yes, there is. And I will have, I do have a schedule. I will say that in a recent meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Committee, we have been talking about perhaps the need to maybe extend that schedule a little bit longer. Given the fact that you're updating your housing production plan, your open space and recreation plan, and the comprehensive plan, that's a, that's a lot in what we were given as an 18-month timeframe. And so, we're happy to work, work with you all on, you know, the schedule that suits your needs. And what the Comprehensive Plan Committee has been talking about is perhaps looking at spring 2025, not 20, not this year, not next year, but the year after for adoption. So, this is a, it's a, it's, I won't say it's a long process, but it's, it's a thorough process and it does involve various steps and a lot of public outreach, which has already started. So, it does take some time. And we're working with, you know, the Comprehensive Plan Committee as well as many other boards and committees, such as yourselves. And the Comprehensive Plan Committee is really committed to outreach to all of the boards and committees in town. So, they have members of their committee that are serving as liaisons to, to other boards. Yes?
Just a question, since I'm on Capitol at life for, as the planning representative. We're looking at these infrastructure big things right now, like for the harbors. They, does that cross over into yours?
The harbors? I'm sorry?
Yeah. The harbors have big infrastructure things coming up in the next five years?
Sure. Yes. So, that would be a really good example of a capital facility or improvement that is in the, in the timeframe of the comprehensive plan. And identifying that in the comprehensive plan is an important item for capital improvements is, is, it's tying those things together, if you will.
Do you have line of sight to those things that are coming through now on the five-year budget plan, basically?
We, well, I would say not, not yet because we've only started. So, we, we definitely, we have a lot of documents and reports that we have received that are current. But if there are things that are, you know, really being prepared right now that we may not be aware of and we aren't aware of everything that's going on, it would be good to know about those to make sure we do have all the most recent materials and documents. So, thanks for that comment.
Okay.
Okay. So, next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, this is going to be very hard for you to see. I'm sorry. But if you have a hard copy, you'll be able to, to do that. So, I've just talked about sort of the different components of the plan. Again, repeated here, there is a vision statement and growth policy, the goals of the comprehensive plan, existing conditions. And then we take other reports and plans, such as the housing production plan and the open space and recreation plan. And those become part of the comprehensive plan. So, in, in the past, the Cape Cod Commission, these plans were kind of appended and attached to your comprehensive plan. The document became very long and tedious to read. So, the goal with, under the new regulations by the Cape Cod Commission is to streamline that process. So, these other plans, they, they will definitely inform the comprehensive plan, but they won't be like attached. So, you have a 300-page document. They'll be referred to and summarized. But they do become an important component. Again, capital facilities and the targeted action plan, those are the main components of, of the comprehensive plan. Once they're all, we've gone through outreach and gone through assembling those draft documents or components, they become part of a draft comprehensive plan. And ultimately, once, you know, endorsed and adopted by, not adopted, but endorsed by other boards and committees, then they become the final comprehensive plan. And then they go to town meeting for, for adoption. So, one thing that has changed again, since the last time your plan was adopted, is that town meeting approval takes place before Cape Cod Commission certifies your plan is consistent. So, that's a, a big change. It used to be that the towns would submit a preliminary plan and then Cape Cod Commission would comment on it. It would go back and forth. And so, they've eliminated that, that step. So, we try to coordinate with the Cape Cod Commission during the process, like once the goals are developed, the vision statement, kind of interim steps along the way so that by the time it goes to town meeting, hopefully, Cape Cod Commission is satisfied with the content and that you fulfill the requirements. So, by the time it goes to the Cape Cod Commission, it's, you know, it's hopefully very acceptable to, to the Cape Cod Commission as well. And next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, the Comprehensive Plan Committee's already been hard at work. We've been meeting since, since August. And first steps were to, just to develop an overall community engagement strategy. And the committee is very engaged. They've, they have sort of subject matter experts as they, as they're saying that, you know, specialties that they all, they come from a broad range of interests. And so, they've been conducting outreach this summer. You may have seen a pop-up card, a little visioning card, postcard. That, that yielded 300, over 300 responses, which is really great. It was like a lot of on-the-ground, you know, sort of going to committee meetings, going to various places where people congregate and getting input on just some really high-level questions. What do you love most about Harwich? What would you like to change? And they got some great input from that. So, that's been an early part of their work. And also, preparing a survey, a comprehensive plan survey that has about 30 questions. We've got a final draft of that that's circulating with the committee now. I think you may, may have seen a version of that. If not, I know they plan to share that with you. And that should be going out relatively soon. And I think the committee would like to get, get that going and get the results back from that by the end of the calendar year. So, pretty aggressive timeframe for that. So, those are some of the early efforts that that committee's been doing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is that survey going to be online?
Yes. Mm-hmm. It will. It'll be through a Survey Monkey instrument, probably, most likely. Yeah. So, it should be released very soon. We have, like I said, a final draft we sent back to the committee chair just this week. So, I think that they're planning to release that soon. And I think that will be advertised broadly, hopefully, throughout the town. Yep. I'm not sure what else I have on the slides.
I was just curious, some of the-
Sure.
Similar to Alan's question around the deployment of that. And then, how is, like, is there opportunity for us to see the data when it comes back?
Absolutely. Yes.
And do you have demograph, like demographic information on people? Could you cut it different ways? Like, how deep do you get?
Yeah. So, so, we can sort of, you know, parse the survey to, you know, look at different age groups, different demographics. Any, any way you want to slice and dice the survey can be done through that instrument. So, there should be a lot of really good data. And like I said, it's, it's about 30 questions and it does cover some specifics, too, about open space, about housing. So, there's some specific sections on those issues, as well as other, other issues of key concern as well. As well as some high-level visioning, like, you know, again, asking people in an open-ended question, you know, what would you like the future to be of Harwich? So, we should get some really good, good data from that survey coming up.
And very specifically, how is it, thank you.
Sure.
How is it deployed? Is it sent to a database that is already existing? Is it promoted on social or?
I think that, well, I think the committee would like to send it out through, if there is an email database or another, you know, of list, listserv of residents or households. They haven't been able to access that yet. So, if the planning board can be helpful in that regard, I think that they're still working on that. But it certainly would be through the town's website, through social media. They've talked about another postcard. You know, that is, I mean, if that is something, a mailing, we, so we're still discussing ways that it can be sent out. And I think they're, you know, completely open and, you know, want to get it as well advertised as possible. They would like to get a lot of input on it.
Does Harwich, it's more rhetorical, I guess, but does Harwich have like an email blast that sends out? I know like Pauline's and Brewster-
We have C-Em blasts from the town administrator when the weather's bad. We have safety ones.
Right. Safety ones, but nothing like, like, oh, here are some jobs that are available. Here are like-
Not yet. They're updating it.
Okay.
A question, a follow-up on that. Is this full-time residents and summer residents since we're, I think, 50/50 now?
I think that, you know, they would like to get as many participants as possible. And I believe the survey also asked some questions around whether you are a full-time, part-time resident, work, you know, in Harwich, et cetera. So, it would get at that data, you know. So, it's open, it, it will be open to as many people as we can get to. The question is how, what is the best, what are the best ways? I wouldn't say it's just one way to distribute it. There are many ways to get the word out. So, that, you know, again, it has not yet gone out. It's, it's like, you know, I would say it could be as early as next week, given the holidays. But, you know, definitely, the committee needs some help in terms of how to distribute it, you know, effectively. Might be a place where, where you all could have some, some guidance on that.
So, the assessor's database is the most comprehensive-
Mm-hmm. Right.
List for-
Right.
Where your tax bill goes, so everything follow up.
Exactly. I think they've been looking for like a email or not either, either email distribution list or a mailing address distribution list. And Joyce McIntyre is the chair of that committee. I know she's been working on that with Garrett Curran as well. And I'm not sure that they have found like a perfect solution yet. It's or the best solution. So-
Thank you.
Work in progress. Right. Well, it just, I think I've only got a couple more slides. But in the near future, probably in a January, not the best time of year, but given sort of the way things progressed this summer, the committee's looking at visioning workshops in probably January, February timeframe. And given the, the deployment of the survey, like soon, they would like to have these workshops be more targeted and focused on specific issues rather than being very general in nature. Still, there is a need to create a vision statement and growth policy for, for the community, which is an important first step. So, we're still working on sort of the details of those workshops and how they'll roll out. But just so, so you're aware that there will be probably at least two in the winter timeframe. Good time of year to sit around the fireplace and talk about vision, visioning. We'll certainly gather the, you know, the year-round community. How we get to the season, more seasonal community is always a challenge. But hopefully, the survey will be broad enough, you know, in its outreach that we'll, we'll get some input from even part-time or seasonal residents. So, and so, those will be coming up. They're not scheduled yet, but they will be, you know, relatively soon. And, oh, this is just some members of our team. There are more behind the scenes, working on specific elements. As I mentioned, Karen Sonnerberg is doing the housing production plan. Gordon Leedy and Erica McCarthy is not on the screen. She is leading, they are leading the open space and recreation plan update. And I understand Christine mentioned that there's a committee meeting tomorrow. So, that, that work is definitely underway and getting, getting some good momentum. And the housing production plan likewise. So, I think we're, we're really on a good course right now on all three efforts. And you'll be seeing a lot of me over the coming months. And if, if the committee would like, the, the, I'm sorry, the Planning Board would like, the Comprehensive Plan Committee would be happy to give periodic updates on progress and seek your input on, on specific issues as we move forward. And maybe, I'm not sure if that's about it. That's it. But I'm happy to answer any more specific questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Just one other question that I have is, who will be, do you have a kind of a key list of people that will be involved in the visioning? Or is that going to be open to the public? And you kind of have like an open room where people will, you'll get verbatims and people doing post-it notes and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. I think the initial sort of visioning workshops, we, we sort of foresee those as open to everyone and, and, you know, absolutely everything is open to everyone. But the initial visioning, like to kind of capture as broad an audience as we can. And, and then as we get further into the plan development, you know, there may be a need for more like focus groups, targeted workshops on specific issues. And that is, again, is something the committee has talked about quite a bit already, that they, they would really like the workshops in the winter to be already diving into specific issues. So, you know, I think we still have to kind of work out a balance of, of all of that. Because the survey will give us a lot of good data, but you only capture a certain number of people through that instrument. And then, there are other tools. You know, there are other ways of getting people to voice their opinions. And it's always challenging, you know, people that are working full-time or have two jobs, three jobs, you know, to get them to provide input on a comprehensive plan is always a challenge. So, particularly here on the Cape. So, we'll be looking at every method we can.
I was going to say, one of the things that strikes me is going to be interesting to see how you guys handle is recently, you know, in the news has been all this stuff on the kind of reconstitution of the charges of the committees in town. I don't know if you guys have followed the newspaper. But so, what you end up seeing is there are certain interest groups in the town whose passion and energy runs extremely deep, but it's very narrow shaft that goes like right to the core for them. And there's not a whole lot of, you know, overlapping in the Venn diagram. They're just these, you know, things, these pools of activity. And it's, it's going to be interesting to see, you know, how fully represented some of these energetic, highly-charged, and also, you know, cash-dense activities are, you know. So, I don't know.
Yeah. I'd be curious about what you're seeing, you know, that, you know, as the planning board, sort of what are some of the hot-button issues that, that you've been seeing in the, in the past year or so? But yes.
In my experience, when you alter one land use document, it often throws off a lot of others or some others. And they, they get out of alignment. So, is, I would think that there might be either, my question, I guess, is whether that evaluation of whether or not that has happened and to what extent and what needs to be done to, to bring them back into alignment is part of your contract? Or is that another thing that you just basically publish your, your, your document and then someone else has to come along behind you to, to evaluate other related land use documents?
Well, no. It's definitely intended to try to get those plans in alignment and to at least reflect what is currently happening. You know, we can only, if we're working over a one-to-two-year time period, we're going to try to review and capture what's been happening for the last maybe five to 10 years and then what's happening right now. So, it's hard to look further back than that. But one thing we will do is look back at the last comprehensive plan and what the goals were then. What was the vision statement then? What were the goals then? And, and look at what the, the regional plan has for goals and vision and try to bring those in alignment. That's one of the first steps after we sort of get, get some public input initially on the vision statement, you know, vision and growth policy. Then we dive into what the goals for the comprehensive plan are going to be. And so, we do look back. And then we also, we do look forward, too. So, we're, we're looking at, you know, your wastewater planning, your open, all these other documents that are being prepared, the housing and the open space plan, they're really pretty timely in terms of, you know, lining up with the comp plan, right? Because, you know, those, housing is a huge issue, right? And where it's going to go and density, appropriate density mirrored with open space protection at the same time, which is also really, you know, key goal for the town in protecting resources. So, we try to, you know, kind of put that all into readable documents, you know, documents that are short and concise, talking about the existing conditions and analyzing that. So, what's the current state of the town? And, and then looking forward for the next five to 10 years, what are some of the really big issues that you're going to face? So, we do, we, you know, we do what we can to take a look comprehensively across all these different issue areas.
If you find that, say, there's, you know, some serious issue of, that's, puts your document out of alignment with something that, you know, needs to be handled in a certain way, like zoning, how, can you really implement your plan until that issue is resolved?
Well, there will be recommendations. The action plan that I very briefly touched on in the comprehensive plan can and should include zoning measures, zoning changes that will be needed in order to implement the plan and, and also to implement, you know, other growth management measures. So, zoning is a, is a really big, a big factor in the comprehensive plan update. And so, there will be recommendations in, in the comprehensive plan about, you know, zoning changes that should be considered. So, and, and the Cape Cod Commission is looking at that as well. How are you going to implement your growth policy? If your growth policy is to, you know, stay the way Harwich is today and, you know, not, not change anything, then, well, then, other things will have to change in order to accomplish that, right? So, with the pressures for housing, you know, the pressures for growth, there will need to be zoning changes in order to carry that out. So, it does, it does come together in the comprehensive plan in some very, you know, broad recommendations and strategies that then boards like the Planning Board, the Zoning Board and others in town, boards and committees have to implement. So, so there will be recommendations in that plan that then, you know, will, will be carried forth through your work and other boards and committees in town.
So, and I get, my, I guess my, what I'm curious about is those, those areas where there, you know, let's just say your plan evolves beyond whatever the last one was in some area pretty significantly. And there is another land use document that affects whatever that particular area is, your plan can't really be in effect until that other, like something like zoning has, you know, there's a process for, for changing it. And it, and so, I'm just wondering, I'm just asking about the mechanics of it. Is it conditionally approved until that, those other processes are followed and changed so that they are in alignment? Or is it approved and- Or is it approved and without the, does it not have a, you know, bearing on what's being done in, you know, in any one of those other areas?
Right. Sorry if I didn't answer that very well before. So it does have a bearing on these other plans, so, and we try to resolve any conflicts if there are internal conflicts with a specific plan that, you know, has already made recommendations and the comprehensive plan is going in a different direction, obviously, you know, there'd need to be some resolution of that. So it isn't, it isn't a contingent, like, an approval of the comprehensive plan isn't like contingent on adoption of another plan. The action plan, the recommendations in the comp plan are the town's sort of, you know, sort of good faith, best faith effort that we're going to implement X, Y, and Z in the next five to 10 years. And so it's meant to be like an umbrella, if you, you know, think of it that way, as an overarching vision and goals for the town, and then the other plans, you know, harbor management, open space, et cetera, are, should be consistent with that, hopefully they are. And if there are conflicts, then we try to resolve that during the process of preparing the comp plan so that there aren't conflicts. I don't know if that helps answer it a little bit.
Thank you. Yeah, it definitely does. And you might have answered it before and I just didn't get it.
No, but that's okay, because it's hard to conceptualize something like this that, you know, we're just starting and it's gonna take a year to two years to fully, you know, see it come to fruition. But during that time, we'll get to know a lot, a lot more about Harwich, and we'll be, you know, doing a lot of research and reading about some other planning efforts that are ongoing right now and having conversations and discussions with staff and committees that are involved in those planning efforts as well. So hopefully it'll be a consistent, consistent with the other planning work that's going on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Clarification?
Yes.
So guidelines, it's a guideline. It doesn't have like the teeth underneath it that says you have to go do this and this and this. It's a recommendation.
Strategy versus tactics.
Right, strategy and tactics, is, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so it has an action plan with an implementation schedule, and so again, that's like the, you know.
But there's no teeth behind it that says you have to do this by this date.
Well, you know, going back a few layers, there is in the Cape Cod Commission Act that says that the towns will get their zoning consistent, make their zoning consistent with their comprehensive plan within two years, which is really like, that's like such a stretch to, you know, to your timeframe. The goal is to be consistent as possible.
Which is really where Harry was going.
Right, right.
So just as another addendum, I think what sometimes we've heard, but it doesn't get voiced maybe well, is the pressure on our aquifer and water systems.
Yes.
Yep, the, how are we gonna support the growth by, we all, there's only one aquifer in all of Cape Cod.
Right.
You know?
Yes.
So when we talk density and everything else, it's like, we can't produce more water, so we have to.
That's where the, sort of, the conflicts come in, don't they? Because the housing, you know, we all are facing housing shortages, housing needs on the Cape, and to do that, to meet the need, you need to have more density. But to have density, you have to have sewer. You have sewer, then you have other impacts, and so it's a balancing act, and that's what the goal of this plan is to reach consensus about what the overall growth policy is for the town, and then to implement that as best you can. And then the plan can be updated periodically, like other plans, like the wastewater management plan and others, they're updated periodically. That's why we're doing an update now, because the last time the plan was done was 12, you know, over 10 years ago. A lot has changed in 10 to 15 years that, you know, the goal of these plans is to be as consistent as possible with the overall regional goal, to protect our water quality, our character, our natural resources, and to accommodate housing need and growth that is just, you know, necessary for the economy. So it's, is definitely a balance among all of those issues on Cape Cod especially.
Great, well, thank you so much, Sharon. You'll be hearing from us and we'll be hearing from you.
Sure. Great, okay.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you for having me tonight, appreciate it so much.
Thank you for turning out.
All right, you got it. Take care.
So we, our last item of the evening is approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion, if I may.
So, both?
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion varies. So everybody except for Craig has to sign our covenant release before he leave.
Do we have to do anything with this?
And so my holiday gift to everybody is a 36-minute meeting.
We don't have to do anything with this, okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, both?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.